Continuation of one that was lapsed. Anybody's got any objections? Okay, I don't hear anything. So we'll do five Thornton Street verse. In concert with MGL, chapter forty-eight, section ten, a public hearing will be held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three in Mendon Town Hall, twenty Main Street, Mendon at six P M for a variance of five Thornton Street. The petitioner Chad and Michelle Labaste seek a variance from the frontage requirements from two hundred to one hundred and sixty-three and a half feet. Yeah, if you want to. This is a variance that was granted and it's expired and they started building their house. They have two years, expired over two years. So it's the same thing they had before, right?
Yeah, nothing new, which is just need to renew it, I guess.
So it's pretty self-explanatory, really. Anybody got any objections or to renew it? Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to renew the variance on five Thornton Street. Second. Aye.
Aye, unanimous done.
It was easy.
We need an easy button.
I've got a little support. Those people.
Okay.
He was nervous.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And the next one, next hearing will be for variance for twenty-nine A Hartford Avenue. And I have a continuation letter here for that. On behalf of the applicant Route eighty-five Realty Corporation, and due to the uncertainty of the final outcome of the superseding order of conditions that Mass D O P, Mass Department of Fire and Metal Protection has been working on for about a year, we respectfully request a continuation of the above variance application scheduled to be held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, meeting to your next scheduled meeting. We are anticipating having a superseding order of conditions issued by that time. We request that the meeting for the variance not be opened and no discussion other than a continuation in reference to the application take place. In motion.
I'll motion to continue until next meeting.
November sixteenth.
It's like a sixteen.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So November sixteenth for that hearing. The next one will be a continuation appeal of the Building Commissioner's decision twenty-nine Maury Street. This is a continuation. Me, I don't have to read this again, continuation. This is a continuation. All those involved. Okay. Present your case, sir. The Building Commissioner, John.
Yep.
You're appealing your decision, so where do we?
I don't know how these normally work. Who starts?
I've never done one before, so you're on the same boat. We are an appeal, you know? Last meeting thing. They're all kind of up in the air of what will.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, do you want me to start or again, I've never done this, so.
Go ahead.
All right.
Give us a synopsis of what happened last.
The last meeting, there was some question about the testimony. We, we, it's video and we brought the video and understand that it's keyed up to. We had a lot of stuff, but we limited it to three-minute videos. If you see what's actually going on.
Yeah, we didn't have last time.
So.
We didn't have, in a format that could.
Do you want a little bit of background on this? Because there's about a three-year process. Okay. At one point in time, the owner Kevin, who's sitting at the end of the table, he was using the property at twenty-nine Maury for commercial activities. He, he recognized that he said he was gonna stop it. He slowed down and over the course of two years, we had, we went back and forth in Nova District Court a number of times. But he's ceased using the property for commercial activities to the best of my knowledge. That doesn't mean he doesn't have some equipment there being used for personal use. We had a meeting with the select board at one point to decide whether we wanted to go to Superior Court. Town Council was there. When the activities were described, Town Council said, there's, there's nothing here on that. So the, the Assistant D A dismissed it at the district court level. Our Town Council looked at the activity and said there was nothing to pursue as far as a Superior Court action for an injunction. So unless there's something that I'm not aware of that's been transpiring, I'm, you know, I'll look at the videos. I, from my perspective, we don't have commercial activities going on there. We have some commercial equipment being used for residential use, but not commercial activity. So that's just, I guess, mostly for better.
I just drove by this week to just visually look at it. It doesn't look like business run that. I mean, you got wood piled around the yacht is done, but I don't see much activity when I'm by.
Well, you're about to see some.
All right, that's, I'm just saying why you want to buy.
I had a similar experience. I just made it a point to run by there a few times and, you know, there was nothing. Doesn't mean that the videos don't show different, but just that's my experience.
Um, really quick, is there any indication as to when this video was taken?
It's taken on October nine at seven A M.
Okay, thank you.
This year.
That truck's leaving, right? That's the truck leaving. Okay.
That's one of the two trucks that left that day.
Well, that's.
That's the first truck. It's a trailer, obviously, with the. Landscaping equipment on it. Dump truck. With the trailer.
What time did we know?
It says seven A M.
It doesn't. It says seven oh nine.
Yeah. That's a Monday.
It's Monday morning. Actually, chronologically, we're fully, so. And you'll see that there's, I think, at least three, possibly four employees getting ready for the day by bringing equipment on and off the trucks.
Same day? Same day for the video?
Yeah, same day, just to look, as I say, in reverse order, this is like, you know, right around seven, the other was around seven oh nine.
It's all early in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, just, okay. The stuff's there over the weekend. It's Monday morning. They're gonna work.
Yeah.
Employees show up, they're loading the trucks.
I'm just asking that it wasn't pieced together different days at different times and all. It's the same day, as I say, about ten minutes of each other.
See, there's at least three employees there loading the trucks or unloading the trucks or whatever they're doing. See, they're in reverse order a few minutes. The first video saw the same three or four guys getting on the trucks and then driving. That's, that's a ten-minute, ten-minute video of what went on Monday morning between seven and seven-ten. That happens every day. So.
So, um.
Have you done?
That's it. We could be here for, you know, the rest of the night, but.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Up to you.
We talked about when I bring it on the weekend, I mow my lawn and stuff.
Yeah, but is this every day that this happens or just Monday?
It happens every day.
Were those employees?
Yeah, you say yes.
Bought my truck from the shop to grab the trailer because I dropped it off over the weekend.
I don't see that's a business, but anyway, does this happen every day?
My trucks are at the shop.
Were they?
One pickup truck is my personal truck.
Yeah.
What were they doing with the buckets?
It's taken out of the back of the truck.
Empty buckets. I was looking for them to dump any, but they.
They were dumping grass on empty, so.
Dirt out of one of them.
Yeah, that's not great.
What's that?
That's not trash, grass.
No, it's the product of landscaping activity, you know.
We dumped the grass in my yacht. I love it.
You want me to drop my grass off in your yacht?
I'd love it.
Compost.
Compost, that's what I do, big compost piles.
Yeah, that was Monday morning, so that was when they were picking the trailer after I used it.
All right, so if this video was taken on Tuesday morning, all those trucks would have been leaving.
Yeah, that's, well, except for the, like I said, your truck, yeah, your truck, yeah.
Well, you parked it there on the weekend, so it's only conducting business on weekend. I mean, I.
I wouldn't say that busy.
Operate anything besides doing stuff.
So that's. There's a dump truck, a trailer, another trailer, and a pickup truck.
I bet if you drive around Mendon, see how many yachts have this kind of stuff in it. There's a lot of.
That's entirely possible. The fact that you allow everybody to violate the bylaws doesn't mean this guy can.
I don't. You live in the country.
You know? Okay, you want a video, we provide a video.
All right, I see.
How is worth a video? We can bring an hour's worth of video, but you're not gonna believe your lying eyes if you don't believe what you just saw.
I believe that was Monday morning.
You have a, you have a.
That's why I asked.
Truck in your yard overnight?
Yes, it was there all the time.
And you have four employees that show up every morning to.
Then you're interested.
So, Mr. Building Inspector, what, what did you see and is it consistent with your?
So, you know, that, that, you know, one time of ten minutes coming there, that's not consistent with what, with what was going on previously before they were there in and out all day, every day, changing tires, fixing equipment in the driveway, you know, running impact guns later at night because, you know, of course they're hardworking and they're trying to fix it, but they can't do that there. But this is, this is a lot different. So five minutes worth like that, that I wouldn't call that a commercial activity if I had some proof of it every day. And I've been up there more times than I can count.
And it's. It's only Mondays they do that, maybe more than they leave.
Have you become Saturday or Sunday, I'll drop the trailer off, I mow my lawn, just like we talked about the last times. If I have time to take it over back to the shop on the weekend, I do. Otherwise, I'll grab the truck on Monday and grab the trailer at my house and bring it back. We're not there every single day. We definitely not like what I used to be, I can tell you that.
I, I think just as far as the video, it's not that convincing because it's one point in time, which I, I suspected it was a Monday and he suggested that the last meeting. I'm not defending it, but it's just if we, if we had, you know, three points of data that were different dates, if he asks us to make a decision on a Monday morning, you know what I'm saying?
You were here a month ago, you were in testimony. That it happens virtually every day.
I went by the site seven times.
The building inspector said it did happen, but it doesn't now.
And so what you saw just never happened, right?
No, it happened once a week. He said that.
It shouldn't ever, once, once a week.
You're saying I can't accept my own grass?
Use a.
Don't cross talk.
You don't use a dump truck to cut your grass. You don't use a half a dozen barrels to cut your own grass and hunt them on a truck. You don't do that. You explain to me how he has six grass barrels on his dump truck, takes them up. Because it's, because it's his own lawn. That's a joke. That's a joke.
So.
Nobody does that.
Building is going to speak.
If I can just say that, you know, the, the, the information also that was provided to me didn't include this video. So the decision I made was not based on what we're seeing tonight. I'm not sure the legalities of what exactly.
Would you have made?
I would have looked into it a little bit deeper. And no, I wouldn't have changed it based on just one day's video or. Five minutes every Monday morning, probably. But, you know, I would have gone over there multiple mornings parked on beside street, Circle Street. I can't think of what it is in Circle.
Yes, there's another landscape on the same street that has a truck and trailer. Come down to the house every day.
So.
Contention is that. You put a lot of people out of business if you said not.
Put anybody out of business. He tells me, you say, he says he parks his trucks up in Uxbridge.
Yeah, he does, he says.
So what are they doing in Mendon?
But does it matter?
Yeah, it does matter. If you're, if you're running a business in Uxbridge, your trucks have no business in Mendon.
Okay.
I just think the point is we have one data point.
No, you don't have one data point. You heard testimony of last month that it happens all the time. This is.
We have one physical data point today.
That's not, why, why do you say?
Excuse me. We have one data point. We have the building inspector's testimony. We've personally taken our time up there and inspected multiple times. That's all we have. Sorry, I don't, you know.
Have you been up there at seven o'clock in the?
I have, absolutely.
And you saw nothing?
I saw nothing. I looked.
For ten minutes a day.
It doesn't matter if it's one minute a day. He's not entitled to conduct business activity on his property.
But you prevented it not convincing, because we're saying.
The bylaw says. So what was he doing on the eighth or the ninth? Conducting business on his property. So if it happened only once, it's still a violation and we want enforcement. And obviously, it wasn't that one day. This, this happened in October. We filed this two, two months ago. We wouldn't have done it if it wasn't happening. So despite the fact that you had him here a month ago, he's still doing it. Apparently, he.
Building inspector said he's not, one day a week.
You just saw.
Yeah, ten minutes.
Yeah.
It's in the morning.
Ten minutes and it was entirely his business operations in that ten minutes. Do you want me to, do I have to video it every day for thirty days to bring it in thirty videos?
Oh, man, that probably wouldn't have been better.
That may be exactly what happens. You know, if you think, if you can't believe your lying eyes today.
But I had ten minutes leaving in the morning.
What I saw was people dumping a couple buckets and loading the truck and leaving. I don't think, I don't see that as business activity.
It wasn't very, you're overlooking the fact that he's not entitled to have the truck there at all. You don't use a dump truck to mow your own lawn. That's a joke. You don't need two trucks and two trailers to mow your own lawn. You don't need six plastic barrels for the grass. And you don't load your own grass onto a pickup, onto a dump truck.
He's not saying he's not the landscaper. He's a landscaper. He runs a business out of Uxbridge.
So you're telling me.
If he takes a truck home, he's supposed to take all the barrels out of Uxbridge and leave everything there.
Yeah.
Drive his pickup home.
He's supposed to run his business in Uxbridge.
That's never gonna happen with any business.
So what's his dump truck doing at his house?
He uses it to get transportation.
Oh, he has two trucks, yet he only drives one at a time. You saw two of them leave. One is a dump truck with a trailer and a pickup truck with a trailer. There, there's no rational explanation to explain that other than he's conducting a landscaping business and he's parking the trucks in a residential zone, which he has just claimed not entitled to do under your bylaws. Whether he does it one day, thirty days, or a hundred days, it's a commercial use, it's not permitted.
What do you think, John?
Well, I'd like to add that when, when we had this in front of our own town council and there was video of him using a dump truck to load firework from the back of his lot up to the front and running the, the sawmill to make fencing for his own yard, town council felt that it was not a violation and it wasn't running a business just because it was a commercial piece of equipment. It was being used for his personal use.
The town council still doesn't believe that's a business.
How do we know that? Has she seen the video?
She has not seen any video.
Well, then how could she make a decision?
Just talk to one of them.
Oh, but she.
Like what you have in last, in the last meetings. They can't call the town council to come in after those who select. Maybe you have the town council look at it.
I got you to do it.
Cutting wood and making my own fence?
Huh?
Who's talking about making?
He's talking about cutting wooden fences. We're talking about landscaping.
Yeah, that's all he's talking about now.
Yeah, we're not talking about.
We already got all the cutting wood. Forget that.
Yeah, we're always talking about cutting wood. We're talking about. John brought up a sawmill and.
Yeah, and that's all resolved. Do not any word.
The point of that was using it as commercial equipment for his personal use, whether it's for his own use, mowing or cutting wood. I mean, I would. I talked from town councils.
Because I can afford better equipment to do something that wouldn't matter.
That's all done. That's all.
I would be open to town council revealing that footage. That's what we're suggesting.
You can do that. Continue with the town council.
Yeah. Just absolutely sure, you know, and get town council's opinion. I don't think would be, I would apply.
You can ask the town council to look at it.
It's fine with us.
Yeah, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Can you get in touch with town council? Okay.
What?
Huh? Continue. Oh, everything else in.
Is he? Are you trying to speak?
I don't think he's speaking for this hearing. I know, I know he's here for a different one.
That's, yeah, that's right.
Start talking to people and.
No, yeah. Is anybody in the audience to say? Go ahead. Name and address.
Yes.
It's Zoned Residential. That's it. Residential zone.
Can I get your name and address for the?
Name and address.
Who purchased you brought Mendon, Mass?
Thank you.
By his name, Ash.
Thank you.
Okay, want to continue with doing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion to continue. Till on November sixteenth, is it?
Yep.
Correct, November sixteenth. Um, so the town council has a chance to review the footage that we saw tonight.
At six o'clock.
At six P M, yes.
Okay.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Valens.
Good night, everyone.
All right, the next one is an appeal of the Building Commissioner's decision for twenty Bignell Drive. In concert with M G L, chapter forty-eight, section fifteen, a public hearing will be held on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three in Mendon Town Hall, twenty Main Street, Mendon, Mass at six P M for appeal of Building Commission's decision regarding twenty Bignell Drive. The petition is an abbot who claims there is commercial activity occurring at residential property.
Could you give a brief history on this one as well, if you'd like?
I want to go to John. What's the history?
So, um, I was initially notified that they were running, running a business out of this, this address. At some point in December of twenty twenty-two, I issued a cease and desist order because it was, the evidence provided to me was that Mr. Weiss said does not live there. So if he owns landscaping business somewhere else, he, he just owns his property. He can't use this to park his, his vehicles. Which was at, at first, look, a little bit different than, than the last situation we just heard about. When Mr. Weiss got the notice, he called me right away and told me that, no, he's not living there, but he'll be moving in within a month. He was in the process of moving from, I think, Milford. And with that, all he was doing at the time, and really all he's done since then, is park one or two masonry-type, landscape-type dump trucks there. So with him living there, there's really, there's really no violation for him parking this truck that he gets in and goes to work himself every day. Has, has or had no workers that I know of going there at the time. Other than maybe incidental and had a couple of small pieces of equipment, you know, plow or sander that I think he's since moved, but we really don't have any, anything. He, he's really not running a business from there. It takes, he's on spark filing, he's not bringing stuff in and out. He's just parking his equipment there.
Did you, did you?
Transportation. He's in progress transportation. He, he offered, he, he brought me utility bills in his name. He established residency here with the town clerk's office. He took me, well, he offered to take me through his house. To show me that he lived there. I just felt that was a little, that's something I really didn't need to see, given all the evidence I had already had. And I thought that wasn't gonna represent the town very well for me to do that. So that's, that's the brief history, along with numerous similar complaints over the course of months from, from two neighbors. I guess the most recent of which is being appealed now, although I don't think the appeal was filed timely. I'm not bothered to get a legal counsel, of course. I think it, I think it's beyond the thirty-day appeal period.
So, uh, so members of the committee, my name's Jim Delphi. I live at nineteen Bignell Drive. I'm the petitioner for this hearing. And everything that Mr. Erickson said is accurate. There's cease and desist order issued on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And upon meeting with the owner of twenty Bignell, seated to my left, Mr. Erickson said, well, they live there. And they don't. They live in Milford. And so, you know, this was kind of like a back and forth, but even on an email from Mr. Erickson, which I'll gladly provide to the committee, he stated that the car in the street is the owner's car that he drops off so he can pick up the work vehicles. So the work vehicles on the property are two dump trucks, associated trailers, bobcat, bobcat trailer and things of that nature. So it's not in dispute who owns this. What really is in dispute is two pieces. Is where does the owner live? Where do they reside? Because this now bumps up against what's known as the primary docile laws of both state and federal. The primary docile law is important because that's what really aligns with the U S Census. That's where you state your tax forms come from, your driver's license, and if a law enforcement agency needed to find you, they needed to know where you reside. So I'm of the opinion the primary docile of the owner of twenty Picknell is in another town. So there's a lot more I could say of that, but similar to the case that was just presented before you. We provided over a week's worth of video to Mister Erickson back on May first. Mister Erickson said, let me review it and then we'll meet. We've never met. But we sent a week's worth of arrival and departure. It shows the crew slash owner of twenty Picknell arriving in the morning, picking up the work vehicles and then departing the property. And then at what I'll call the end of the day, which would be your typical four to six P M. The equipment comes back and it's left there and the owner departs the property. So so this is clearly a staging area for a commercial business. Um, and in uh, I'm of the opinion that it is a direct violation of the rural residential zoning that Picknell Drive falls under. Um, so so dur- during all of my conversations on email with Mister Erickson. The in in, by the way, it was very professional. It was just, you know, there was, there's no issues there between myself and and uh and and some of the other abotters who are aware of this. But the issue, the issue really is that the cease and desist order was given relief based upon the fact that the owner says he lives there. But he doesn't. But say what you want about where he resides. This is, this is commercial storage, commercial staging area. A construction yard, as referred to in the cease and desist order, for this business. And the vehicles and associated equipment are left there. So much has been left there that the property's been augmented, which is their absolute right to have a parking lot behind the garage for this equipment. So there's an extension of of driveway and and things of that nature. And, you know, Mister Erickson in an email said, said to me, you know, well, this is why they're augmenting the property is so they can plant grass for the kids to run around. And I can just tell you that the vehicles are back there. Not a lot of grass. Now, I've never been on the property, so I'm just kind of going by the video with with the cameras. So so, you know, the relief I'm seeking by way of my application is for the cease and desist order to be put in full force and for the commercial activity uh in in all the construction yard usage in the staging area to cease and desist immediately.
Okay.
If you come today, I'll make you a nice pizza at the house.
Did you say previously there's no cross talking? I I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know. I just asked her to speak.
Yeah, okay.
I just asked her to speak.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yep. So uh, I'm Sam uh Captain. We just bought uh twenty Picknell Drive like about a year ago. Since a year, we've been buzzed a lot by Mister Duffy and another neighbor. He's here in the, he he's here in the hall right now. They always hate us since that the first moment we moved there. To be honest with you, that's because we're different scanning. Let me say.
I'm not getting into that. I'm not getting into that.
I wanna approve you some.
But so I. I wanna know, do you actually live there?
Of course.
There was people, there was people before us um leaving there, so we have to wait until they got out of the house.
Yeah, I understand.
And it's our house. John came and I entered inside the house. It's ours. We leave there. I don't know. Should I? I have a picture for like our bedrooms, our kids' rooms, our living room. I could show it to you if you want.
We lived there, sir. And this, that doesn't prevent us from having another house.
Oh, no.
As another summer.
That's right.
I will show you by approve everything right now, but I'm gonna answer some question, then I'll show you some paper if you don't mind. So he said the license. He he's get getting me personally. He asked me about my license, but I'm gonna show you everything right now. That's forbidden. Okay? Well, I have no clue. I, it's me, my brother, what my brother-in-law working there, all right? This is a work truck. It's not a dump truck. This is a landscape body. We have a landscape body. This is for the, for what we have. We have a landscape truck. We have a trailer, yes. We have a bobcat. We use most of the time in the winter time. It's all the way from November all the way to April. It's another location. It stayed there and we cut a lot of trees in the back. Yes, we're gonna do a grass. He said, I turn it to a parking lot. No, I turn forty by forty feet. Well, yes, I turned forty by forty feet as a brush store area to put my my truck there. But the rest of it, I have two acres in the back. Nothing. I didn't touch it yet.
You have to do grass where the kids.
We're gonna do the grass. We're gonna, we we cut.
It's a lot of work. The material is very expensive, so we have to take it step by step.
Since we've been there. I'm just, do you mind if I just show you something here? So first of all, because I wanna approve you, this is three time uh Mister Jean come to me and he approved what what he sees in my, in my, I mean, in my house, Mister Jean. All right, when he see, this is three times. We've been starting this since I just moved to the house. And here's the email if you wanna take a look. Thank you. At the same time. This is three times Mister Jean approved what I have there. And we explain everything to him. This is like, this is my work. That's what we make a living. I have two kids. And I gotta feed them. We gotta put food on the table for these kids, all right? So this is like in May and and August and every every time he comes in, he approve what he see because never changed. Never change. We didn't touch anything. Another thing in May, let's keep going. We we keep problems every month. Mister Duffy called the uh town of Mendon uh the uh, the board of health. He's complaining about trash coming from my house to his house. I wish if we have a map here or something, but I I print a map. So this is the first, the, I mean, so it's, he's really far from us and he complained to the the board of health. That's the trash come from my house to his house. My neighbor is number eighteen and he's at the front of number eighteen all the way. And we have a fence in between me and number eighteen. And then the street is kind of curved and there is a lot of trees.
Impossible to get the trash.
The house is Victor K. Man, and this is the report for her. And please check, this is my house and this is his house.
It's, we are far away.
From the health department. That's nothing happened then.
I also have a photo for Mister Duffy and I can also pull up the map. Let me know if you want me to put anything on.
Map of the.
Yeah, could you do that?
Can you do that?
Google map. You can see how. This one is, that one is thirty twenty.
Yes.
Yeah, that's our house.
And uh, can I go there and just say something on this map, please? You can point it out. Okay, so. Where is the most again? It's right there?
Yeah.
Oh, right there. So this is my house, sir, okay? And can you just go up a little bit? Just move them, move the map like this.
No, 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 it's the other side, Sam.
So he he claimed that's my house. This is my driveway, by the way. He claimed that the trash, this is a big trees here and the fence, six-foot fence all the way up here. And this street, he claimed that the trash moved from here, goes all the way.
To the other side.
To his house. Can you imagine that? And I just put the map right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's insane. That's every time it's happening the same thing. Also, every time Mister Duffy emailing me, which I wouldn't like that. He use a police, he will file a police report. He threatened me a lot. Here's Mister Duffy, this he complain about uh has my mailbox in his, in his yard. And I had like a working, like a three work in the back and the the truck, the work, they had the mailbox. Then the mailbox, I just fixed it up because I'm, I was busy. I didn't change it. And we already changed it right now. So what did you change? We make it looks beautiful. But if you see under the email, that the first email he sent to me, I tried to introduce myself to him. Please read the 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 bottom there. I just tried to introduce myself, lift my phone number. I was trying to be happy with the neighbors. But every time, like, it's a why a police report in a mailbox? I know it's in your land. I know that. And I said, thanks. That's because I was worried. I don't know. It's my my land. How I'm gonna touch it? He told me, then I fixed it. But he didn't give me a chance like, it's like, why, this is, this is my member. This is my number. This is my mailbox. And it wasn't broken. That the mail, the lady who delivered the mail every day, she used it. Since the first time in May, he sent me the email, I believe, until now. She used it fine. We just put like a a rubber around it, like a, like a little rubber to make it secure. That's all.
And we have like four and twelve years old. Every time we see some somebody coming to the house and inspected, like not inside the house, but around the house. They they afraid, like to be honest.
And one more thing, uh, every time we have something in the house, we 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 feel like we've been targeting. We apply for uh another driveway because this is two units. And we get approved from the Department of Highway to do uh a second driveway. The same day I got the police there. They said, what's going on? Because we gotta complain that you're digging on the streets.
That permit.
We have the permit. We showed the permit and we already, the 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 driveway, it's already going on right now. It's it's already working. And when we put the asphalt on the town hall, that's sorry, the town, the uh dry, the highway department.
Yeah.
They came back and checked us, but they didn't say anything because they see what we have. Again, we do everything. We are American citizens. And I have the right to work hard for my kids. And this is my work trucks. I never do any commercial stuff in there. Mister Jean came too many times to the house until the moment you all invited there. You all invited and just see what we do. And I have one question for him. Can I ask him, please?
Ask who?
For for the Mister Duffy. Can I ask him?
If you want to answer, fine.
Okay.
Then ask him.
Okay. Could you please tell me who do your landscaper? How, who cut your grass? Could you please tell me?
So I I just want to address some of the.
That's.
All right. So I mean, this is, there's a lot said. That's okay. And I'll answer that question as I, as I talk. So so most of what has just been said is factually inaccurate. Okay, may I approach the screen?
Go ahead.
Okay. So as it relates to the trash in all times into the mailbox, which uh Mendon Post Office, uh Postmaster advised. So they're correct. I reside here. That's the home. I own all this land down here, all the way to Georgia. Yeah, okay. It's known as a rat tail lawn. In order to get to this, to the zoning that in place in nineteen ninety-eight, properties developed. He needed forty thousand square feet, so they had to add this down here. So they are correct. And the truck was parked here. It was a windy day. And the construction debris from the back of the truck, which Miss Gilmore from the Board of Health acknowledged, blew down the driveway and onto my property. The wind nowhere near my house. That's a fact. But the, but it was two hours of cleaning up styrofoam, cardboard, et cetera, from items that you would do as if you were renovating a bathroom kitchen. Okay, so 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 nothing came over to the yard. And my landscaping was all in this and then located on Net Hill Road. So then, as it relates to, I gotta go back to him, so I forgot something. As it relates to the mailbox. Mister Whizzer's correct. When he took down the trees, the mailbox, which is about here, which sits on my property with the other three mailboxes in the neighborhood. Because the property just keeps going up in order to get to the forty thousand square feet. So the mailbox was knocked over. So I waited for the frost to go away, like froze to ground. I I emailed Mister Whizzer and I said, hey, that's my land and blah, blah, blah. Are you gonna fix the mailbox? And he said, yeah, I didn't know whose land it was. I'll gladly fix it. That was like May. So I waited, didn't really say anything. I checked with the Mendon Postmaster and he said, you know, you're really, no one owns the mailbox. The mailboxes that is there that got knocked over or just or damaged. And they could still deliver the mail because through through a support and through a bungee port, they made it deliverable, so it wasn't a violation of the postal regs, okay? But the mailbox was mine. I am sorry. Because it was knocked over years ago, prior to the ownership of twenty Picknell. But I don't own the mailbox, just like I don't own the other ones on my property, but come under postal regulations. So I said, if, would you, do you wanna fix it? When nothing happened, I was advised by the postmaster to simply say, you can file a homeowner's claim. But in order for me to do that, I needed a police report. So I emailed him and said, if you're not gonna do it, I'm just gonna get a police report. That's all, because it was a public vehicle in a public way that that damaged the mailbox, right? So so now we have kind of like a police matter, which I didn't want that.
I I just, to be, I just want to make sure I understand this clearly. The mailbox is across from twenty Picknell and is receptive for twenty Picknell, but it's on your property.
I think we get way off track here.
Yeah.
Mailboxes.
That's correct, right?
We're getting way off track.
Mr. Chairman, only because it got brought up in the.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I'm just saying.
So so it's factually incorrect. The the mailbox, and by the way, the mailbox has been fixed and it's it's perfect.
All right, let's move on from the mailbox. I don't wanna hear about the mailbox.
But, you know, the the the, anyhow, the charge is harassment, which I think is just not factual.
Can we say something?
Yes.
For the trash too. We have people, they've been put trash in our like if you see the, also the house is continued to the outside, outside through another street. So we collecting trash every day.
Yeah, people drinking beers and throw up there. I put two signs.
Oh, you're not telling me about that.
Yeah, I put two signs, thanks God, until now, since the trash.
They're probably.
And the reports from the health department approved with the team. It came at the same day, I guess. You have the report there, please.
Yep, yeah, I did. I did see it.
It says not, no trash at all. No, nothing there.
Yep.
So.
So we're here today to talk about the commercial activity, possibly.
I I have one question. I just ask him. I I wanna answer from him, please. That's who the landscaper he uses?
He just told us.
Okay. Well, yes. All right. Do you know where he has, 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 like his operation where? Do you know where is his operation, sir? Do you know where he started?
On Net Hill Road.
That's his operation there? So he put the, he put the trucks over there.
That's that's not my concern. My concern is what's going on at number twenty Picknell. And as I said earlier, there's only two issues here. Do they reside there? And is this a clear violation of the zoning? And I would just point.
I think if they can prove their residence.
I can show you a picture of the house.
Okay, hang on. Now, okay, if if we're gonna continue this and they have to prove their residence, um, you probably should set the parameters of what proof is, right? Is there two things there?
I mean, you wanna show our.
John.
Our pictures at the house?
If I could, the the most recent time that I went there, I pulled in the driveway unannounced and they came out of the kitchen, asked me who I was. I explained who I am and why I was there. And they said, oh, we've seen your car on video before, because I pulled into there, like the other one.
It was in the, I was over there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know what your board will want to do for that, but, you know, my take was, as as somebody said earlier, if if you have a vacation house down on the Cape that for voting reasons and other legal reasons, that might not be your primary residence, but.
Do you hold Mendon? Sorry, do you vote in Mendon?
We haven't voted.
Yeah, we've just moved there. We haven't moved.
Okay.
But again, all the, everything I have, it's under my name there. If if I go outside at at my, they, they want, how he know that I'm going and backing him for us? I have no clue there. It's me, my brother-in-law. We work there and he's my partner in the house. He's my partner on the, on the company. So we have no clue. We have nothing. Uh, Mister Duffy use a landscaping company. Please, if you can check his, his address there, see how many.
I know where it is. I I know.
You know what? He run the, and very big operation there and he gets in the business. So it's not, trust me, it's not the business. It's me. It's me, my wife, my kids.
So how, how, how did you watch?
There'll be no cross talking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There are definitely.
Questions of each other in.
Okay.
I mean, we 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 cannot like somebody watching us.
Be comfortable at home. We feel most.
I wanna make, make sure my kids are safe.
I blame, I don't blame you.
Understand.
Thank you.
Um. So go way back. Um, you stated that you had sent the building commissioner video. And so, John, did you get a chance to review that video?
I did. It was really nothing but him, him or someone else getting in the, the trucks and coming and going. There was not even to the point of the other one. I didn't see barrels being loaded and unloaded. I didn't see other workers there. Um, I did notice a backup alarm, which I can appreciate. Might have been, you know, bothersome at seven A M. But, uh, because, you know, it had audio as well.
Right.
But there was, there was just a whole lot of videos of the trucks leaving at six or seven in the morning, coming home at four, five.
So you don't work in and out all day. Trucks don't come in and out all day long.
No. And we use.
He agreed with that. He agreed with that.
Look, they they come and go, but not all day.
Alright, I I just wanna.
But so, they 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 arrive in the morning, take what they need, it's clearly a staging area. It's clearly avoidance of commercial property rental or ownership for the business. In 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 this, I mean, why do we have zoning? I would just ask that question before. Why do we have some, if this activity, if this house, if this property can be purchased? And have them reside elsewhere, we have video.
We don't know that.
Well, we have video, we, you know, if we wanna continue it, we'll show it.
Uh, where they reside, we have no.
I I don't know, like, look, I mean, it's it's my secret, well, the address is on the cease and desist order, that's where they reside. That's within all communications from this town, in this matter, have gone to that address.
Question. Do your children go to school in town?
No.
I've tried school for them.
So I just wanna point out one other thing. The town zoning bylaws that are available on the town website, page twenty eight, table A, which is the grid. Which shows the appropriate zoning and what you can do there, I'm sure you're familiar with it. But, you know, it just, it reads so crystal clear. And I'm of the belief that the bylaws in this town are written poorly. But it says the following home occupations and no other are permitted. Without the necessi- without the necessary special permits. No profession of medicine, dentistry, law, architecture, accounting, engineering, real estate, insurance, metals and woodworking, art, Photoshop, domestic work, dressmaking, teaching. And then go on quick here, academic pursuits. Home occupations other than the above just mentioned. May be allowed only on special permit by the planning board. There's no way the planning board.
No, I'm on the planning board too.
I I would just, I would say that that, you know, what he's doing is not a home occupation, home occupation is something that's made or performed with.
I do say the same.
Right, I mean.
Not a home occupation.
If it's their home, as they, as they testify.
Yeah, but that's not.
Your vehicles leaving and then coming back at the end of, I mean, but it sounds like you're stating is that. They leave for the duration of the workday and then come back after work, is what it sounds like.
Then leave, without occupying.
You, I'm sorry, can I answer something?
Yeah.
Is he watching me every day? Does he see me all the summer, leaving or coming back? Come on, it's like, what if I'm going to bring a food, what if I'm going to her mom here, she lives here. We go visit someone, we do this, we do that, is that possible? Is he monitoring us that we leaving every day? That doesn't make any sense.
No, he shouldn't be doing that.
And, yes, exactly, and I asked Mister Jean about some videos he said he received, but it's legal. I don't know how it's legal, somebody watching me every day, seeing 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 me, it was audio. Seeing me going back and forth, what if like, yeah, I drop my truck and I take my other, my personal truck. Just go bring some stuff, just go, it's, I'm sorry, it's not your business, I go whatever I wanna do. That's nothing against the law, we respect all the law. And even the area, I put a crush stone in the back because I got complaint from the other neighbor who's here. The truck was beeping before, so we make like a circle, like just going back and forth, so we're not bothering anybody. Thank you.
So just wanna let you know, we wanna live in peace, we working hard, I'm education, I graduated from B C. So, we are education people, we not like to come and make problem, we bought a house to leave, to put food in our kids' table. So. Sometime I take my kids to my mom, so you're not punishing me for that, so I can't, I have four years old, he wanna see his grandma. She have a cancer, I have to go see her every day. She have appointment, so many appointment at B N C in Boston Medical Center, I have to take her her appointment, you're not gonna punish me for that. Last year, my dad passed away from cancer too, so I have to, I'm helping my parents, so you cannot watch me where I'm going with my kids. We have family to help them too.
Um, now. Sorry, when was the timeline of when you moved in?
Uh, October twenty four.
October twenty four.
Last year, that's the time we moved.
So a year ago.
So, okay, okay.
I mean, we 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 got the house October twenty four, but we moved uh, around December.
We kinda like.
Was a tenant there, and once we moved there, we bought the house she says she's leaving.
Yeah.
Well, then we just moved.
So technically more December, during Christmas.
I mean, I. I am of the belief that, from what I've heard, this does not rise to the level of commercial activity myself.
I don't think it does either.
So I am, I'm ready to um, make a motion to not overturn this decision.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It was two to, two to, what was the vote?
It's great.
Great.
Great, that'd be great.
Thanks.
That's the unanimous, because there's five members on the board, and two of them are not here.
Sorry, we we um, did, yes, for audience input.
Yeah, did we have any audience input?
I think I did. I did a whatever.
Before.
So what, residential too?
Yes.
We are.
If I double net your role, where the gentleman said, another business, that it's all residential?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Now the day you did. We don't know, okay, how old Crestview Drive, another business built there, how did that get there?
They've all been there. Same way they got there before.
But. Yeah, if you, if you have a complaint about zoning enforcement over on Crestview Drive, you can please submit it to the board.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Seem to be a big rat race here, called all these so-called businesses coming into town in residential areas.
That's why the zoning laws are being changed right now, being rewritten.
It's gonna be changed.
The state is mandated, it changed.
And as far as all these cease and desist orders, I remember it clearly. Because the morning they cleared that lot. No other than neighbors knew what was going on, he had so much equipment in there. He got a cease and desist order for that, but guess what? Because he didn't receive it in the mail until the power week Monday, he cleared that lot in one day. So all the neighbors are wide open with these trees all gone. Now why do you clear a lot of that many trees in one day? Could you answer me that? I clear trees on my lot too, but I don't bear the land.
Sort of talking about my yard, right?
I guess.
Your yard, yeah.
My yard?
We have a tree.
I can cut all the trees I want, it's my yard.
Alright.
Well, we we made, we made a decision.
Already made decisions.
So I think we are.
Thank you guys.
We all said on it.
That the cease and desist was issued.
Thank you.
In an acknowledgement.
Should we go?
Commercial activity.
We should go.
Yeah. And then, as a result of the residential location where they reside, it was not enforced. Okay, so I hope that's in the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, nice to meet you, John.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we get the next one. Appeal of the Building Commissioner's decision for twenty Level Street. In accordance with M G L. Chapter forty eight, section fifteen, a public hearing will be held on October nineteen, twenty twenty three, in Menden Town Hall. Twenty Main Street, Menden, at six PM for an appeal of Building Commissioner's decision regarding twentieth Level Street. The petitioner, Camillus and Susan Vander Valk, are appealing the enforcement order placed on the parking lot. Located across the street from their business.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Joining to Nellis.
Um, just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Lisa Vander Valk.
Oh, hi.
Nice to meet you.
John, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
My dad Casey.
Hi, Casey.
Alright, John, do you wanna be first and?
Yeah.
Want them to.
No, I'll I'll go first.
Okay, go ahead.
To me, this one is. So, um, as I'm sure you all know, they 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 own and operate the Vander Valk Farm, which is diagonally across the street from the. The property where a parking lot was recently created, and, you know, in the table eighty, table abuses. Um, in that residential zone, um, you know, a a commas, a a parking lot. Um, any nature, and especially for commercial use, I guess that's the only reason you'd have a parking lot, is which is not allowable primary use. Um, this is not, I don't think this falls under the national law that allows farming on parcels of five acres or more by right. It's just the fact that it's a completely different parcel. So I thought this was pretty, pretty cut and dried. A little repeat.
It's wild, they they turned on.
Yeah, there's no.
But no projecting, sorry, yeah, they just record us.
I'm sorry, my voice doesn't project that loud. Uh, so this, this is just really simple, that that's a standalone lot, it's not part of the farm. And it'd be a parking lot of use. Regulation table, table. Without getting into any other things that might regulate a parking lot, it's a prohibited use in the residential zone. So that's basically essence of the cease and desist order.
Also, should we say?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I guess like what we wanna say is like, we do feel like it does fall under. Um, chapter forty A, section three, the right to farm law. Um, in in the law specifically, it says. You know, that land divided by a public or private way shall be construed as one parcel. Um, so, we basically, like, when we purchased that land, um, it was with the idea that it was. Part of the farm, um, and so, we're not building a parking lot across the street from the farm, we're building a parking lot on our farm. Um, we are a commercial agriculture, um, we sell wine, and we need to have parking spaces for our. Um. Customers to come and 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 purchase the wine, it's what makes our farm sustainable. If we don't have parking, um, then our farm is is no longer sustainable. Um, so we do feel like, um. Chapter forty A, section three is, um. Relevant. Yeah, so I can show you a picture of the parcels. Um, it's this right here. Um, so this was the original parcel, which you can see is made up of multiple parcels of land, and that's like where the farm is currently located. Um, as a farm winery, um, we're licensed to sell wine on all of these parcels of land. Um, and then you can see the overlap here with the new parcel, which is the parking lot here. You can see the parking lot on the new parcel, it's just a small section of.
And it was, it was bought with the other parcels?
No, it was just recently bought.
It was recently bought, okay.
Recently purchased, yeah. Um.
So even the parcels that were, which were, the farm is presently on, they were bought separate times also.
Okay.
So this was the 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 previous land, and this is the new land, it was two parcels that we actually bought.
Now, um, what is the intent of what is to be done with the other parcels, or the other pieces of the new parcels?
Sure, I mean, most of the land we plan to just preserve as um, farmland, um. It's obviously like a huge lot, it's a ton of woods, um, we cut down, yes, it's obviously like. We cut down some trees to make the parking lot, which is, you know, facing the street. Because we wanted it to be accessible for the lot across the street, but we're also preserving a lot of, like, the land behind it. Um, it, yeah, I mean, the idea is like that it will become, become part of the farm, and and most of our farmland is just that. It's, it's just farms, it's, it's not buildings, we grow Christmas trees, we grow fruit. That's pretty much what we do, we don't have any grand plans.
But it should have been submitted to the planning board for a site plan review before it even started.
Sure, I guess, I guess that was.
You disturbed over one acre of land, and that has to be a site plan review through the planning board.
Sure, so I guess like, that was a miss, like, uh, we just misunderstood the law, like, we were looking at, um. You know, the chapter forty A, section three, which, um, says, like, no zone, like, the the town zoning and bylaws. Cannot require a special permit for land use for commercial agriculture, and that includes wine. So the way we had read the one, the the law, we thought that we were in our right, so. If we weren't, we do apologize, like, that wasn't, that obviously wasn't our intention at all. Um, this was the law we were going by, and we wanted you guys to be able to look at it as well.
I know, there, there was some talk, I know, with the zone planning board, them on the planning board about that.
Sure.
That's me, it should have been through the site plan review. Definitely go to, should have gone to the site.
I think that would be, if it's even deemed to be an allowable.
To overturn this, it would have to go a site plan review.
I'm saying, you have to.
Agreed.
If it would be allowed, any guarantee would be allowed, you have to go through site plan review.
A site plan review through the zoning board?
Planning board.
The planning board, okay, cool, we're just, we're still.
And that's different than.
That's different.
Yeah.
And if you disturb over one acre, it's supposed to be.
That's different than the special permit, so.
Okay, cool, that's good to know, I guess that's not something we did know, um.
That's. If we determined that.
Sure.
So.
Okay, understood.
Even hands.
Joseph Anthony Ellis, if I may.
Yeah.
Good evening, uh, members of board, Joseph Anthony Ellis, I'm, uh, the attorney for Robert and Maria Rigerio. Who are abutists to the property, and I'd like to, I just note for the record that I submitted a letter to the board. Uh, in support of the building inspector's determination. I believe that the appellants have uh, misread forty A, section three. Regarding the merger of property that is separated by a public way. The statutory reference for counting land across the street is for the purpose of determining the production of food. Uh, by acreage, that would then support the um, amount of food that is sold on the underlying property. So, to the extent that the Vander Valks wanted to farm the property across the street. And add to the amount of products that they sell on site in their restaurant. Then the fact that it's across the street would not make any difference. It is, um, not, but parking is not in and of itself an agricultural activity. And I do not believe that the statute was intended to provide a waiver for across the street parking. Um, that's one point. Uh, additionally, um, I think that when you look into the situation regarding the parking. Um, it would be incumbent on anyone to uh, present to the planning board a significant plan. Showing how many spaces are needed based on the use. Um, and so, the Vander Valks are benefited by a farm winery pouring license. And a common victors license, but under Massachusetts general laws, the food produced for sale on a farm. Is supposed to be from the farm or neighboring farms, or from farms in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But if you study and look at the Vander Valk's website, you will note that on a regular basis, they advertise that they have food trucks. Come to the property, and um, I'm not saying that they don't provide. Uh, the patrons with food that is grown in agricultural spots in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But it certainly doesn't appear that way. Uh, again, the the variances or the the relief that's provided by forty A, section three. Is to provoke farming activities, not commercial activities. Certainly, commercial farming activities, which would certainly mean that, to the extent that the Vander Valks were raising cattle or or, um. Uh, steers on their property or pigs, and they had a pig roast. Then certainly, there's no problem with that, because it's produce and, um, and, um. Food that's grown on the property, but to invite someone in, uh, to an agricultural piece of property for the purpose of running a business. That cannot otherwise be run in a residential zone, and frankly, can't be run on an agricultural piece of property. Provides a whole different view for your board, and certainly, if you were to move forward to the planning board. As to just what activities there you're going to supply parking for. Um, I don't know how many spaces they intended to build, I looked at the site. It was a significant amount of land disturbance, um, that was not permitted. There was no concern about lighting, no concern about drainage, no concern about safety of patrons. no concern about safety of patrons crossing the street, all of the things that a planning board would otherwise pay attention to and make determinations of. So the mere fact that they have a farm there and it's a wonderful establishment, I don't mean to criticize it uh, in any shape, manner or form, I, I know they sell Christmas trees and I know that people like going there and they're very um, welcoming people to their site, but the reality is, and you've heard this throughout the theme tonight, that there's, when there are exceptions to the zoning bylaw, they're limited. And um, so it's, it's the position of, of Mr. and Mrs. Rigerio that the cease and desist order was properly issued, that no further use of that property can be made and um, we will reserve our right to make further arguments regarding the separation of the street um, at a later date if that's necessary. Um, so again, we, we would ask that you uphold the building inspector's decision, um, that's all you need to do, that would prohibit um, the appellants from using the parking lot and uh, we would only request that for a matter of safety uh, that, that it be uh, quadrant off in such a way that it didn't become some point type of an attractive nuisance, because again, there was significant land disturbance and there appears to be a significant grade from the street level down to the area that's been disturbed. I appreciate the opportunity and again, I would ask that you submit, you include the um, letter that I wrote to the board as part of your record for tonight's hearing, thank you.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
Can I just respond to that? So um, I just wanted to respond to what he was saying about um, like us not producing like the, the food that we're using on the property and um, that actually does come up in um, chapter forty A, section three as well, um, it talks about um, well, I'm not going to read it for you, but it basically says like twenty-five percent of the products for sale. And the main thing that we sell at the winery is our wine, um, and we're happy to provide.
It's very good, I think.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, so we're happy to provide the financials if you want to see, you know, the exact breakdown of numbers, but basically we grow all the blueberries that we use to make our blueberry wine right at the farm. Um, blueberry wine goes into every drink that we, practically every drink that we make. Um, so like, do food trucks come? Yeah, food trucks come, do we make money off of them? We absolutely do not. Um, but basically, the money that we make comes from the fruit that we grow and the wine that we produce and the wine is produced right on the property. We're like the definition of commercial agriculture, we grow the fruit, we make the wine.
I don't think Joe was saying that. I think he meant.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I, I mean, I didn't make any comment about the wine because I'm aware that you, you grow the blueberries and I'm aware that that is a farm product, um, but carefully, um, the food trucks are not selling food that is produced on farms in Massachusetts. Um, if you want to tell the board that the lobster truck is coming from a lobster farm, then, then that may be the case, but you advertise a lobster truck, that is a commercial activity taking place on agricultural property that is not related to agriculture in Massachusetts.
But that could be allowed if they went to a select board and get special permits on the dates that they're going to be there.
But I just want to point out the law that, that um, was, has been presented to us, doesn't say that most of the, doesn't even say that most of the food there or most of the products sold have to be from that farm, it says twenty-five percent.
That, that's correct, but if you continue to read, you'll find out that the rest of it has to be produced on other farms. And there are quotas and, 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 and involved in that.
Okay.
And that goes to the nature of, and that, that's exactly, uh, that's a very good point, because that goes to the nature of making certain that it becomes a commercial farm and not a commercial enterprise.
But, okay, so the, you're saying that the, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on the law. Um, you're talking about the part that says the additional fifty percent. So seventy-five percent of the products have to be grown on farms in Massachusetts.
Correct.
So there you go, so twenty-five percent doesn't.
Um, and I just want, do you grow anything besides blueberries?
Yeah, we grow um, blackberries and raspberries, we also grow all of our Christmas trees as well.
Yeah.
Do you have food trucks in the winter when it is operated as a Christmas tree farm?
Uh, we never have in the past, no.
Okay.
I think the biggest problem we have the board is the packing wires.
Well, the other issue is, you know, it, the parking lot can stand alone, you know, and it's a ten acre parcel of land. We could clear and cut all the trees, uh, we do buy some peaches in now, so we do buy some fruit that we, we don't grow, but we could expand that area and we could put all our peaches in there and it would stand as a farm all on, on its own, because it's ten acres of land.
It would.
Which we haven't done yet and, and, and I guess that's the point that the lawyer made as well, you know, that he's saying like it's a separate parcel of land, so if we wanted to farm it separately, then yes, we could. And like, obviously, like we are a fruit farm, so we, you know, it stands to reason, likely at some point there will be fruit planted across the street, we just, we literally just acquired the property and so we're just, we're working through it.
So, and we also registered with the Department of Agriculture, our land when we bought it, that it became part of our farm and is now listed with them, it's all being part of our farm, both twenty lo, uh, level street and eighteen level street to go with that.
I agree with that, I think that the biggest problem was the packing lot is not done with a site plan review. There's over one acre.
That's true.
Made a commercial packing lot.
Under, we under, we, we understand, we went, we went wrong there for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a further point regarding the parking lot, if I may, the parking lot, uh, the zoning bylaw in the town of Mendon does not allow for parking for principally used to be placed across a public way. And notwithstanding the, the appellant's contention regarding blending the property together, again, we would stand uh, at the point that the statute only allows that for the, for the purpose of, of calculating what's grown. Additionally, whatever position the, the appellants take regarding what you can and can't regulate, the statute says reasonable regulations, okay? So you can reasonably regulate a farm and when you have a street that is the size and layout of what level street, if you think that having a parking lot across the street from a main activity where you're serving alcohol is a good idea, um, there are perhaps people that will differ with that opinion.
You have anything from the audience, anybody want to say anything? Your name? No, definitely not.
So it's really safe in mind, you can have them off the road.
We're not thinking about safety, but I mean, it was, the parking lot was built illegally, that's, that's what we have to look at and say, I agree with you, I want to say.
Part of the reason that we decided to put in the parking lot was because we had, you know, people were coming to, and we didn't have a place for them to park and we did feel like it wasn't safe and we did have people complain to us, you know, that it wasn't safe and people were parking along level street, so we tried to do something to resolve the problem.
Has your, um, has your, the volume of stuff grown increased?
Um, we're, um, yeah, it's. It's over time, this year we're about steady with where we were last year. Um, so I don't think like we're, you know, going to turn into like this massive operation. Um, but yeah, there was like a period of growth like through COVID where people were looking for like a nice like outdoor place to enjoy a glass of wine and luckily for us, we were able to provide that.
And the parking lot's not used every week, like, you know, it's been shut down now for.
It's not our main parking lot.
And, and we've been fine with the parking lot that we have, but we do have, you know, an occasion when we get, like on Mother's Day this year, we were just inundated with people that looking for a place to, you know, go with their mother. So, you know, they went, you know, they were on the street, they were in uh, the neighborhood at the end of the street. Um, and they're all walking up and down the street with baby carriages, it's really not safe. So we really felt that, you know, we needed to do this parking lot and again, it's not going to be used all the time, but.
But it should have came through the planning board.
We, we now agree with that.
I know then.
Yeah.
Right.
Very.
Right, we're not, we're not determining that today, we're just determining whether it should be allowed.
Okay.
And then we don't have the.
You got another comment, all right.
The, um, the plan at the moment is, it's, it's kind of up in the air. Um, we've, we've started some, some demolition of the, the sheet rock and stuff, you know, looking for, because there's a lot of mice kind of situation. Um, so, uh, there's a bunch of them trying to make it a little bit weather tight because the roof shingles are leaking, so we're kind of fatching a few things. Um, but other than that, um, we're not sure. Um, we might, it could be, we could move the winery over there. Because, you know, it's, right now it's just going to be, it's, it's on the farm, it's a farm building as far as we're concerned. Uh, so we could put the wi, winery over there as a possibility. Um, I, we, we just haven't made any decisions, you know, on that, we're just trying to make it so that it's safe and doesn't continue to rot away.
What's the appeal?
So, but I'll, I'll take it to the planning board.
Yeah. Anything else, John?
Thank you. We have one more.
It's one more question, comment?
I was right across the street, my house, the name and the entrance, sorry, Julian from G nineteen level street. And there, the entrance is right from right across the main driveway. When I looked out my, my window out of my office, always sees red burns and a bunch of trees hanging down. We're supposed to be a scenic road, close to along the scenic road, everything is torn down, my whole lot was torn down, all the stone walls are torn down. And it, it, it's just, it's not right, it's residential, I moved into a residential meeting point, I bought a lot, brought my brother, my brother. And now I have to look at a parking lot across the street, no, I'm not happy, I'm not happy at all.
Hey, can I make a comment?
No, not, um, all we'll say is, uh, that part of the reason we purchased the land was because we were afraid that, um, if we didn't buy it, it would be bought up by a developer and a bunch of, um, very large houses would have been built on the property, which also would have required, um, cutting down a large amount of trees, um, so I know I showed this picture before, um, but the parking lot is just a, a small portion of the entire, um, plot of land, um, that we did purchase. Um, and I, I will also say that we've already, um, taken steps to, um, a landscape, um, the parking area, we planted like a bunch of Christmas trees, we're going to plant grass. I mean, it's not our intention that it's going to be like this big eyesore in the street, we all, our farm, we have patrons that come, we want it to look nice, um, not only for our neighbors, but for our customers as well, um, so yes, right now there's poles and ribbons and stuff, but, um.
Yeah, that's definitely temporary, you know, eventually, you know, we'll do nice, nice burns inside, you know, the, you know, the grass and some flowers like.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Um, motion to uphold the building inspector's uh, cease and desist order.
Not seconding, I, I just, I am of the mind that this is within the spirit of the law forty A, section three that, um, that was presented to us, I think that, you know, it, it's clear that seventy-five percent of the stuff that happens at that farm and is sold is farm products and it seems to me like just an expansion of the farming activities, so.
I don't think that was the question, Tom.
Well, yeah.
The question is, was the parking lot legal? It's not, that the, didn't go through site plan review. Uh, by law, simply say disturbing over one acre of land, have to go to site plan.
Well, but that's, that's, that's the next step, though, if we.
All that, that's the first step, that's not the next step, that's the first step. Have to go through that first before you can do anything, do your site plan review, and we, we view the parking lot, decide what you're going to use for lighting, curbs, drainage, all that stuff, that has to be done, that was not done.
Unfortunately, I have to make that motion, I totally agree with what you're saying, but.
I agree with that.
Statutorily.
We're on the parking lot, that's what they're appealing, they're appealing the parking, not the wine.
But we're.
No, but you have to understand that, you know, I, I know it doesn't say that we can build a parking lot, but if we can sell the wine, which it says we can sell the wine in the statute, okay? It's, it's reasonable to, to say that we need place for customers to park so that we can sell the wine.
Yeah, but you shouldn't be crossing a public road too, it says that in the bylaw.
There's other.
Have to be on the same side as you.
There's, you know, there's other regulations at play here that unfortunately, you may need to just get an engineer to review the regulations, design.
I guess just that we thought like, I understand that there's other regulations, like.
Sure, I guess I'm, my question is.
Clearly starts off like no zoning ordinance or bylaw can, you know, restrict the use of the land. So that's kind of where we were coming from, but we understand that there's a difference of opinion and.
I guess my question is, how can they go for a site plan review if it's not an allowed use?
That's true.
And just for, the way I see, we're, this is an appeal of the.
That's why they go for a special permit, site plan review with a special permit.
But.
It's a special permit is the thing that, that I don't need.
We've got one in front of us now, it's a parking lot across the street.
Thought that this should be overturned, but, you know, I, I'll go, obviously we, we can have a split decision on this because it's not.
True.
You know, it's by determination.
I think we've got to uphold the building inspector's decisions.
Which you could um, readdress with.
Yeah, so what is the next step for us?
I would suggest to get an engineer to um, review the regulations and potentially even a zoning attorney to possibly refute this or, or, you know, uh, look at the, the laws a little bit more as how they apply. Uh, but we're not in a position to unfortunately overturn the, the building inspector's decision.
No, because if it's any wetlands on the site, you have to bring all that, so we don't know that. The, that stuff, we don't know that.
They, they, they came out.
Engineer has to know that.
They came out and looked at the site, well, in the wetlands, um, who's head of the.
Conservation.
Conservation committee.
But there probably isn't, I don't know.
Yeah, they came out and, you know, and because again, a neighbor complained that, you know, we were working in there and that we were digging in wetlands and he came out and he agreed that the, the wetlands were three hundred feet away.
Yeah, but you're still, you're going to put a parking lot, you're going to have drainage off the parking lot, you have to do the whole drainage thing and go through the town engineer. Because it's a good sized parking lot, by all, hundred fifty cas?
No, I'm a hundred tops.
Hundred tops.
And that's if I put them on the grass.
So is this to assume that like any changes we're making to the farm are not, like the chapter forty A is not applicable to us as a farm anymore?
No, I didn't say that, just that parking lot across the street, that's my opinion, I'm not a professional, I'm not a. What do you think, Joe?
No, I was just gonna, I was gonna add, you know, you can talk to me anytime about anything that you want to do with these properties
Yeah, for sure.
In terms of specifics and we can talk about that and see if I can tell you what I, my interpretation is on, on how forty A.
So you had no problem with the farm or anything, you're just a parking lot?
No, if this parking lot were on the same parcel as that farm, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here tonight.
That's right.
So if we moved the farm across the street, we'd be all set.
I, well, let's talk in more detail, but. Yeah, I, I, I don't think of a blanket.
That's like what we're saying is that like that's how we consider the land, it's like that the, like, the land across the street is already part of the farm.
And, and, and I mean, it actually is across the street, I mean, it's a big, there's about a hundred feet. And 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 I mean, it actually is across the street, I mean, there's a big, there's about a hundred feet of it, you know, that is 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 across the street from the farm.
Yeah.
So.
I saw the drawing. If they're putting in the house you're talking about, yeah, yeah, it could go be structural, they're going to change the design of the house, it's got to go through the building.
At least the building department, if you, I I think the suggestion is that, um, because you're not producing products on that. Non-contiguous parcel.
But it is a contiguous parcel.
I think that's a continuous. The one that they bought, the other one that.
What I'm saying, parcel across the street.
But there there would still be some regulations, I mean, if 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 everything is allowable and you're going to construct a parking lot, you still have to go to the planning board and. And do it according to other regulations, so it's not that you'd be prohibited, but you'd be regulated, yeah, subject to the regulations. You know, the same as any. Parking lot, but that's. A little separate from this.
You made a motion.
Motion to uphold the, uh, building inspector's, uh, cease and desist order.
You got a vote, Tom?
Uh, no, I I think this is a reasonable expansion if they're farming business, then I I think it's.
I want the building commission of this.
What was that?
We're going along with John. It doesn't get paid for, and that's what he does.
Two to one, and that's fine.
Okay. Does it have to be three unanimous to?
Or upholding?
You're a three person board, so you're not a five person board.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
I would think if it was like.
If you were overturning.
Right, then you'd have to be unanimous, but we're not, so.
All right, so you got to probably just come to the planning board or talk to your engineer and do something.
Just talk to the planner, have a conversation, that's what we can do.
Okay, that's good to know, we're getting to know all of her. Thank you.
We're not going to put anybody at this, we've got to follow those.
We understand, we're, it's just disappointing.
Heard a lot of stuff on the parking lot.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe.
Nice to see you all.
Same here. And I can't hear them, I can't hear the notes. You can't, uh, minutes.
I'll second that.
I.
I. All right, see you guys.